Good. Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting from Monday, May 22, 2023, to order. We're going to start tonight's meeting with a swearing-in ceremony for all newly elected officials. We will be going into executive session after that, returning to open session no later than 6:00 p.m.
I've been sent to the microphone. Emily Mitchell, Town Clerk. It is with great pleasure that I'm here tonight to swear in our newly elected and re-elected officials. As you all know, last week, Tuesday, May 16th, was our annual town election. We had four elected offices, each with two vacancies, and the majority of folks elected are here tonight to be sworn in. I want to thank all of our candidates for putting themselves out there. It's a very challenging, vulnerable position to run for elected office. It takes great time, passion, and commitment to this community to do so. So, a thank you to all of our candidates and a congratulations to everyone who won their races. My plan tonight is to go race by race, and I'll go in the order that races appeared on the ballot. So, our first race was Board of Selectmen, newly Select Board, also related to the third ballot question that passed last week. So, Jeff Handler did come to see me last week to get sworn in. I'll have Don Howell come up. Jeff, you're welcome to join us if you'd like.
I'll let Don go up. Okay, I'll go.
It's a ceremony. It's a lot better than parole.
Already being told what to do.
All right. So, I'll have you raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jeffrey Handel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All duties.
All duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As a member of the Select Board.
As a member of the Select Board.
For the Town of Harwich.
The Town of Harwich.
In accordance with the bylaws and charter of the Town of Harwich.
In accordance with bylaws and charter of the Town of Harwich.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
Congratulations. And Don, I'll give you your packet of goodies before you leave. We have certificates for folks. Yes, you do. I'm filling in today as your official sworn-in date.
Do I get to go on vacation like she does?
No. Congratulations.
Julie's the board representative for vacation.
I take that.
This is redeemable, it says.
Yeah, well, maybe Mary or Michael will let you, but I'm not.
All right. If I could have Meredith and Ryan come up from Monmouth Regional School Committee.
Yeah, I got sworn in Friday so that I could get the material for today.
Congratulations to you both. And we'll do the same. We'll have you raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mary Clarkson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All duties.
All duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As a member of the Monmouth Regional School Committee.
As a member of the Monmouth Regional School Committee.
In accordance with the bylaws and charter of the Town of Harwich.
In accordance with the bylaws and charter of the Town of Harwich.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And I have your goodies. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Alan, you're next. All right. You ready?
I'm ready.
All right. I'll have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Alan Thompson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All duties incumbent on me.
All duties incumbent on me.
As a member of the Water, Wastewater Commission.
As a member of the Wastewater Commission.
For the Town of Harwich.
For the Town of Harwich.
In accordance with the bylaws and charter.
In accordance with the bylaws and charter.
Of the Town of Harwich.
The Town of Harwich.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
All right. And it looks like our remaining elected officials are not with us tonight, so we will set separate appointments with them to get them sworn in before their first meetings. I know Alan was interested in saying a few words. I don't know if any of our other elected officials wanted to do so either.
If I may, I would like to say a thank you to all the folks in town who have supported me since 1966. This will be my last run for public office. When I complete this term, my plans are to retire, and I have enjoyed every moment. You just can't believe, you know, all the things that have happened over all those years. My start was a lonely park commissioner, and where you are today, I was, so on and so forth. But again, a thanks to the town for supporting me.
Alan, the town is absolutely blessed to have you. Thank you for all your years.
If I could just end with a few formalities. Inside all of those packets I just gave to our newly elected officials, there's just a signature form confirming that you've been sworn in and that you've received the materials, which include open meeting law requirements, the Board of Selectmen meeting policy. So, just those standard things. If you wouldn't mind reviewing those, signing anything that requires a signature, and then returning those to our office in the Town Clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Congratulations.
Jamie, we're going to retreat to the downstairs. Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting from Monday, May 22, 2023, back to order. Started tonight's meeting at 5:00 with a swearing-in ceremony for newly elected officials, and then 5:30 until now for executive session. Three topics in executive session. First was to approve minutes, Board of Selectmen Executive Session Minutes for January 23, 2023, and February 27, 2023. We did approve those minutes. We did not approve the release of those minutes, but we approved the minutes. Second was discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting law, open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigating position of the town, and that's related to a case on 5 C Street Extension. That's been extended until the 30th, May 30. And then one was to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that open meeting law may, open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, and no decision was made on that. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment announcement?
Staying out. I'm staying out of it.
Wow. Tough crowd. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. Well, officially, we are now open seven days a week. Wanted to let everyone know. Hours are Monday through Friday, 9 to 4; Saturday, 10 to 4; and Sunday, 10 to 2. And then we have a couple of things coming up this week. A ribbon cutting at the Turn Inn on Thursday, the 25th, at 2:30. So, we encourage people to join us for that, as well as a new business, the Beaded Wire in Harwich Port. That is located right next to the Mad Minnow, and we're doing that ribbon cutting on Saturday, the 27th, at 12:30. And our third annual golf tournament at Cranberry Valley. You can still register for that. It's June 8, rain or shine. And then our barbecue competition, Beer and Bones, at the Community Center, June 10. There are still some tickets available for that. It's quite popular, crazy thought, and it's going wild. And then the Harwich Chamber 5K Road Race is June 24, and sign up is open. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we go on to any more public comment, I skipped a line, which was to welcome the new Select Board Member Jeffrey Handler. So, welcome, Jeff.
Thank you.
And to welcome back Select Board Member Howell. Not only got re-elected, but again, name change, so.
I'm going to now turn it over to the ever-beautiful Mr. Link Hooper.
Shots fired.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Link Hooper, DPW Director. Just wanted to remind you and anybody that may be watching at home that this coming Wednesday is the Public Workshop for Low-Lying Roads. It's Wednesday, 4:00. It's been posted on the town's website, the DPW website, and the Cape Cod Commission's website. It's a virtual meeting. Click on the link that is actually in a flyer. It looks just like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Brianna Powell, Housing Advocate. I'm here to also announce an event that the Affordable Housing Trust and their higher consultants, J.M. Goldson, are hosting. This is a community forum for public feedback on draft mission and goals, including vision of the action plan for the Affordable Housing Trust. This event will be held on Tuesday, June 27, at 6:30 p.m. in the multipurpose room at the Community Center. Please consider attending to learn more and to share your ideas about housing initiatives in town. And I gave you all a flyer, and I'll leave some back here as well.
Thank you, Brianna.
Good evening, Bernadette Waystack. On behalf of the Harwich Cultural Council, I know you've been overwhelmed with a lot of cultural stuff the last few weeks, but one more thing, and I left the invitation for each of you at your place. The Cultural Council will be honoring the designees of this year's local cultural grants on June 8 from 4 to 6 at the 204 in the Library Meeting Room, and I want to take this opportunity, not just to invite the members of the Select Board, but to make sure the public knows it is a public event and everyone is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernadette. Anyone else for public comment announcement? Mary?
Just my committee of the week, and the one I want to highlight this week is the historic District Historical Commission, and they have three vacancies. So, if anyone has an interest in preserving history, they do a great job. They were involved with the Captain's Row in West Harwich, the Brooks Building that's being restored, and a lot of other good causes. So, get your application in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And I alluded to it a minute ago, but we are now to be referred to as the Select Board with the passage of the ballot question at the latest elections. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
If I could. One final reminder that the town's Memorial Day Ceremony will take place one week from today, so that's Monday, May 29, at 9:30 in the morning at Brooks Park and Howard Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And Select Board Member Howell is going to represent the Select Board there. Right, Don?
Yep.
Thank you. Any motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve the committee vacancies. Actually, that's where I'm going to be there. Approve the Select Board meeting minutes for May 8, 2023, and accept the resignation of Jeffrey Handler. That was a very short tenure. Oh, from the Local Planning Committee, effective immediately.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
I'll abstain from the Select Board meeting minutes, as I was not present.
Thank you. And then?
I will aye from my resignation.
Joe, do you want a separate motion on that, or are we good?
We're good.
Okay. Thank you. A new business presentation by Susie Holmes, Executive Director of Barnstable County Retirement, on a potential cost-of-living adjustment COLA increase from 3% to 5%. Good evening.
Hello. Thank you for inviting me to speak. I wanted to bring to the attention of the board that the Barnstable County Retirement Association would like to increase the cost of living increase for our retirees for fiscal year 2022. Yeah, 2022, 23, I'm sorry, 23. They, there was a bill passed that allowed all the different retirement boards throughout the entire state to be able to increase the 3% to 5% if they chose. With us being a county system, we needed to make sure that we presented to all of the towns in our system and allowed them to vote. We need 2/3 of our towns to vote yes in order to be able to allow the retirees to have an additional 2% to their retirement benefits. This is on a cap of $18,000, but it will be a cost to all the towns and all the units in our system. We don't have a definite cost for each town, because each town's cost will vary depending on the percentage, but what I had done is an estimate. For the first year, it, in fiscal year 2025, it's going to cost all the system 1.079602. In order to have that, the Town of Harwich would be about $47,000 increase to your FY 2025 budget for the appropriation that's paid annually or biannually, depending how the town selects to do that. This is something that is a one-time opportunity. It is going to be a cost that will go till 2037, but it is only going to allow us to increase from 3% to 5% only that fiscal year 2023. Does anybody have any questions about it?
Thank you. Questions or comments, Don? Jeff?
No.
Mary?
No.
Julie?
No.
Mary?
I actually have one question for Joe. Can we fit this into our budget?
Well, I think if I could, the answer is if this passes the majority of the 2/3, we'll have to. This was not anticipated. It's not an extraordinary cost. I can tell you that Carol Coppola, who may be joining us on the phone as Finance Director, presented this topic to the Managers and Administrators Meeting two weeks ago, and as soon as I heard that Susie was available for road shows, I asked her to come here to her hometown of Harwich. Some of my colleagues had said their towns voted against it. The reasons they offered were there's a compounding effect in this vote. Some other towns, and it's the one that did resonate with me, I want the board to be aware of, they had just completed collective bargaining, and generally, the COLAs were around 3%. So, there was concern in other communities that if you go to 5% for the retirees, what impact would that have on the relations with the other groups? So, to me, it's not a question of whether we can afford it. We would have to honor it either way. For me, the concern would be as it relates to the bargaining we just finished. That may not be a deal breaker, but something to consider. And, Mr. Chairman, if I could, through you to Susie, when we heard the presentation from Managers and Administrators, I believe, seven towns had voted to affirm this. Do you have an update on that?
We have now nine. So, there's only one more town that needs to approve it, and then it will go forward.
Well, the pressure's on.
I figured I'd ask you guys next.
How many more towns are we waiting for?
I just need one more to vote yes. So, you were, tonight was your town, and then next, tomorrow night is Chatham. And then if I don't have one of those two, then I'm going to go to the few others that have not voted yet.
Okay. So, total of about five more towns that haven't voted, or?
There's about five, yeah, that haven't voted.
Okay.
Yeah.
With the new information presented by the town administrator, Don, any follow-up questions?
I just have the same concern about this at 5% in settling contracts, at 3% in the compounding effect.
Jeff?
Yeah, I think the compounding effect has caught my ear a little bit. I'd like to maybe know a little bit more about how that plays out over the next.
Well, what it is, is I don't know if you do have the letter from Siegel in your packages. What it does is it actually details down every single year up until it's paid. So, in FY 2025, it was going to be $1,079,602. The following year, it was going to add $1,142,219. The following year, 1.208,468. The following year after there, 1.278,559. It goes up progressively until the last two years, where it goes up a little bit more substantially to a little over $2 million. This is going to cost the system, based on our actuarial, approximately $20 million when it's all said and done.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I think for me, I did get to read that in the packet, but I think it's important for the public to hear that as well. So, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah. Do you want me to read each of the?
No, no, I think you did a great job. Thank you.
Mary?
Yeah, I'm torn. I mean, retirees don't have a lot of other sources of money, so in that sense, I'm in favor. But the compounding effect and the fact that our unions that we just settled are nowhere near five, I'm hard-pressed.
Could I make one additional comment?
You can.
This is actually on a cap of $18,000. So, the max additional amount that any retiree will receive is an additional $30 if their benefit is $18,000. Anyone below that will not even get the $30 additional per month. So, that's what it's going to affect financially for each retiree.
Okay. Thank you.
Because there is that cap.
And I did see that.
Julie?
No, I don't have any other questions. I mean, you know, the compounding is a bit worrisome, but at the same token, when I think of the monies that we spend on other programs and other pieces of our government, I guess collectively, it's not a lot of money, but it also doesn't put a lot of money in their pocket. I mean, 30 bucks is basically a tank of gas one week or something. So, I am struggling with it a little bit, but I, you know, I'm not opposed, I guess.
Joe, anything further?
Nothing more to add.
Pleasure to the board.
We're going to have to do it if everybody votes it, so.
I think the cap at 30, the argument about the retirees and the 5%, the cap is $18,000. We don't have any $18,000 employees that are, that we're negotiating contracts with. And it was if the collective bargaining agreements went up more than 3%, pretty much crossed the board for the three years anyway.
Right.
I need a motion.
I move that we approve the increase from 3% to 5% in fiscal year 23 for the Barnstable County Retirement. And do I need to include the $18,000 max, just to make sure that we're clear?
Yep.
You know, not to exceed $18,000 a year for those retirees.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Anyone in the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I am going to abstain. I have two parents that will benefit from this, so I will not be voting on it. So, that's a 4-0-1.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susie.
All right. Next up would be new business. Be discussion of broadband in Harwich. I have been approached now three times from interested parties related to broadband in Harwich. John Ketchum that's with us tonight was the most recent and the most articulate in what he had sent me. So, I agreed to start the conversation tonight. Certainly, this will have to come back, but welcome, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. And you can sit or stand, whatever you want.
Thank you, John. John, there's an extra if you need that.
Yeah, I didn't know that. Thank you, John Ketchum, Lakers Drive, South Harwich. I guess I have to start by saying I'm here speaking only for myself. Not that any of this has anything to do with my other committee involvements in town, but I will say explicitly, it does not have anything to do with any of my other committee involvements in town. Just before I start with the content here, and I'm sorry, I'm just dumping this on you at the last minute, but I didn't actually know this was on the agenda till this morning, just say a few words about my background so you'll have some context about where this is coming from. I'm an electrical engineer with PhD, who worked mostly in telecom R&amp;D for my career, aside for a few years teaching undergraduate and graduate courses in communications theory and related things.
Joe, will you slide that mic a little closer?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Dave has to keep telling me to speak up. So, I'll try to, I'll try to keep speaking up. So, aside from other interests, I have been aware and spoken to various people over the past several years about the issue of broadband in Harwich, and more recently, have gotten more involved in some Cape activities. But, so what I want to do, and I don't know how much time you guys are going to tolerate me talking about this stuff, but I want to just give a brief overview and then try to get to the issues that I think just need to be discussion items in town. So, in the first slide here is just what is broadband access? Just to sort of set the background here, everybody probably already has their own idea about what it is. My informal definition of what that is, is internet access that supports high-quality service for all current residential and small business needs. This is not a fixed thing, these requirements and what people need and what people, what constitutes high-quality service is a moving target, and it's changed a lot in the last couple of years over the COVID thing, and it continues to change. The FCC has a technical definition of what broadband is. They say, and this has been in place for quite a while, I think it, at least since the early 2000s, maybe since the 90s, what they call broadband is 25 megabits per second down and 3 megabits per second up. Most people these days consider that to be inadequate. The FCC Chair has proposed increasing this to 100 megabits down, 20 megabits up. The issue, one of the issues with this is the FCC is, like other federal agencies, is somewhat subject to what you might call regulatory capture. That is, the incumbents don't really want to see this stuff change. The other part of it is that just down and up speeds are really sort of not hardly the whole picture. But if you wanted to define broadband, a reasonable definition for broadband today, just in terms of up and down speeds, you might call it 100 megabits down, 100 megabits up, or symmetrical 100 megabits per second. But people's experience of their service has more to do with other things that are harder to measure, harder to pin down, like latency. That is, how fast your traffic, how fast the network responds to what you're, to things you're doing, like web browsing or whatever. A lot of that is in the network beyond, like your local cable service act, service provider. And the other thing, which is more noticeable, but still somewhat hard to measure, is like outage probability. Like, okay, we get 100 megabits, but how often is this unavailable? Or how often is there so much congestion in the network that you don't get that? And the other thing to point out is the access speeds really refer to a shared resource. When you have a Comcast subscription and they're selling you whatever it is, 100 megabits or 300-megabit service, that resource is not dedicated to you. or 300 megabit service, that resource is not dedicated to you. You're sharing that 100 or 300 megabits or whatever it is with everyone else who's connected to the same piece of coax that runs down your street. And furthermore, most of the things you do on the internet, you don't need to go that fast, actually. But when you get into trouble is when everybody on your street is on a Zoom call, or everyone on your street is watching the latest release of whatever succession, or whatever the latest thing is. And there are a lot of available technologies about which you hear things from time to time. Cable monums is what we all in Harwich mostly use for internet access, otherwise you don't have reasonable internet access at all. Fiber to the home, which is nowhere available on the Cape as far as I know, except for possibly some very isolated places. But elsewhere in major cities, it's a major thing, you can get internet access through cellular data, through public Wi-Fi, through satellite services like Starlink, I think is the must, the SpaceX thing. From my point of view, and I think this opinion is shared by a lot of other people, fiber to the home, that is optical fibers, is really the only reasonable approach to realistically fill not only the current needs, but also for the foreseeable future. And I think what we really need to be concerned about is where the demand is going and where the network that we currently have, which belongs to Comcast, where that's going. And I'll say a bit more. So, this next slide just talks about what, again, I think is the best approach for broadband, and I think that point of view is shared by a lot of other people. The technology is called passive optical network, and I won't go into what that means or why, but frequently referred to as PON. But one of the advantages of that particular way of using fiber optic access is that it minimizes the amount of electronics that you have to deploy in the network. Current, recent versions of PON are referred to as GPON or gigabit per second PON. There are some many deployments of GPON technology. But currently, if one were deploying a fiber optic network now, the only reasonable choice would be something called XGS PON, which is 10 gigabit per second PON. So, the fibers going down your street, which you would get access to the internet through, would be running at line speeds of 10 gigabits per second.
Do you have a question? One second, John.
But John, do these applications require that fiber is to the home or on the street?
Yes, these things, these things wouldn't make sense without fiber on the street and going to your home. I'll try to clarify that a little bit. I mean, there's all kinds of ways fiber is deployed in our networks. And when we access the internet through our Comcast service, some of it is going through some fiber access somewhere. But these all require, and that's one of the issues, one of the challenges that we'll get to about all of this. You know, the next point here is about what we have now, which is the cable network, which is an older network, which was originally deployed by someone other than Comcast and taken up by Comcast. It uses coaxial cables, which is a single copper wire in a sheath with a metal cladding around it that runs down our streets. It uses a technology called DOCSIS, which is an acronym, and I can't tell you what the acronym stands for. But it's universally or very widely used in all cable access networks that gives you internet access. And it's what Comcast uses in the town of Harwich and on Cape Cod for internet access.
Any follow-up, Mary?
No.
Okay, go ahead, John.
The thing about the coaxial DOCSIS thing is it has, the coax has limited bandwidth. That is, there's only so far they can go to increasing the speed over which you get service on that line. Fiber-based distribution, they have very tiny little, like very small optical fibers. And typically, they're deployed in bundles of multiple fibers, up to like possibly 288 fibers. But fewer than that. Each one of those fibers has very much more bandwidth than the coax cable that goes down your street. And so, one of the advantages of deploying a fiber network is that you would be deploying multiple fibers to try to cover all future needs. And even with one of those fibers, you can go 10 gigabits per second, where Comcast struggles to get up to, not just Comcast, but with those coax cables and the DOCSIS technology, they struggle. They now can supply pretty easily us 300 megabits per second. They have technology that will go a gigabit per second, but it hasn't been deployed commercially because it's expensive. And really, if you're going to invest in your networks, you want to invest in fiber That covers that. So, then the question is, okay, what does this have to do with Harwich? What are our needs here? And really, that's part of my goal, is starting that discussion about what are the real needs here in Harwich. And I've just enumerated a few of what I think are those needs. Thank you, Jamie. So, the goal I think we should have is what I would call universal broadband access. That is, everyone has access to affordable, high-quality internet access that is available to all homes and businesses in town or anywhere. And that broadband access should be able to meet all current service needs under all conditions, that is, all times of year, in January and in July. And be able to be upgradable to meet future needs. That is, if a change is going to happen, we should change to something that we can anticipate will meet our needs for the foreseeable future. That aside, existing cable-based service from Comcast does exceed FCC requirements. Like I said, the current requirements are 25 and 3. I think what Comcast is providing pretty widely in town of Harwich now is 300 down and 20 up, maybe. So, that's good, but service quality and upgradability are, I don't think, actually meet our needs. And the upgradability part, I think, is an important consideration. You know, there's another issue about customer service, which I'm not really talking about tonight, but it is an issue, I believe, with Comcast, and it should be an issue that we consider here. And part of the reason for the problems we have, or whatever inadequacies we see and Harwich residents see, is there's no competition. There's a single incumbent. So, having said that, I want to talk about, and really, this is sort of more of the meat here, is what's been going on around us on Cape Cod, along these lines? How has the need for better broadband, how is it being addressed? How are people trying to address that? How are towns trying to address that on the Cape? Well, top of the list here is an organization which I think you're aware of called Open Cape, which is a nonprofit organization, which, starting in the, I forget, 2007, 2008, built a state-of-the-art fiber optic middle mile. That is, they run a fiber backbone down the Cape. They cover all of the Cape now and a good bit of southeastern Massachusetts as well, where they're providing internet service to institutional customers. They have never had as a goal building a retail network, that is, supplying residential service or small business service. They're a nonprofit, they don't have access to funds, they don't intend to attempt to figure out the investment problem, which is one of the issues. Other things, there's been a lot of activity in the town of Falmouth. At last year's Falmouth Annual Town Meeting, they approved creating a municipal electrical plant, which is a form of municipal electric company provided for under Massachusetts statute, which has been used in a number of communities in Massachusetts to build broadband fiber distributions. Initially, a lot of this was done in western Massachusetts towns, which were far more severely underserved than Cape towns. That is, had very bad connectivity and very bad service. There's been an effort ongoing in Falmouth for at least five years, probably more, to solve the problem of getting broadband access through fiber for the town of Falmouth. And they decided to go the municipal electrical plant route. They approved it last year at Annual Town Meeting. This year at Annual Town Meeting, they elected a board of commissioners, I think they call it, that will run the electrical plant organization. And their goal is to figure out how to build their municipal fiber operation in Falmouth. There's also, there are state programs directed at funding some of those things. One of these is the Massachusetts Municipal Fiber Grant Program, which has been awarding $250,000 or up to $250,000 grants to municipalities to install fiber access for municipal fiber networks. And I think on the next slide, there's a list of awards they made last year on the Cape. There's a much longer list for the state of Massachusetts. I also included Wareham in the list of Cape towns. But there was another award cycle this year that closed in April. There was an effort to do it in Harwich. I'm not sure what became of that. There are other grant programs more directed at the issue of digital equity and the digital divide, that is, funding people for financial reasons don't have access, or for whatever reasons don't have access. And I know the Cape Cod Commission has at least one dedicated person working to address funding needs and connect towns with funding sources to fund programs to address digital equity issues. Comcast, in fact, has a program they call Internet Essentials for Digital Equity, which taps into a federal affordable connectivity program that supplies a $30 a month subsidy for qualifying recipients. Apparently Comcast has a program that will take that $30 subsidy and provide people with basic internet access for the $30. I know someone in Falmouth who is working to try to connect residents in Falmouth in need with that Comcast program, although Comcast apparently is doing what it can do to hide that program from people because it's a pro forma sort of thing. The Cape Cod Technology Council, I don't know if you are aware of what that is, but it's just a, it's a nonprofit organization of technology people that I've been a member or I've been a member of just this year, but I've attended some of their meetings. They have an infrastructure committee that considers infrastructure issues, and the infrastructure committee has a sort of ad hoc group called the Broadband Resource Committee, which is considering all these things and trying to figure out how to connect efforts in different municipalities in Falmouth to, with each other.
John, I'm going to have you jump right on to next steps now, since this is an initial discussion.
Okay, all right, okay.
This is an initial discussion, and I want to put this on the website so more people can see it.
Yep, okay.
And I want to get the questions from board members.
All right, that's fine. I just want to point out, there is also an organization called the Mass Broadband Institute, which has been addressing these things for the state as well, up until very recently, focused on issues in the western state. So, challenges, well, you know, the biggest challenge is, this is not, it's not an inexpensive proposition to build broadband fiber network. Again, I'm going to go back to Falmouth. They engaged in an initial feasibility study, and they've done an engineering study. The cost they came up with for Falmouth three, four, or five years ago was $54 million to do this in Falmouth. Sort of taking their high-level estimates for how you would do this and applying it to Harwich, I come up with a number of $25 million for Harwich. That's assuming that what your objective is, is to start from ground zero and build a network that covers everybody and do that over the course of a year or two. So, that's a big investment. It's a challenge. How do we do this? And I know part of what they're facing in Falmouth is that question, how are we going to do this? The incumbent provider appears to be completely uninterested in making this sort of investment. Their network in Harwich and on Cape Cod is a cash cow for them. They make a lot of money in this network. It's a legacy network using legacy technology. And really, their focus is on content these days, more than providing service. But in spite of these challenges, funds have been raised and broadband networks have been built in Massachusetts in a number of towns. And they're making inroads on the Cape, in Falmouth anyway, to do this. People in other towns are trying to figure this out as well, but aren't as far along. And the question is, how would you pay for this? And again, they tried to answer this in Falmouth. And their initial study came up with the answer that, you know, under a variety of scenarios about how you would actually do this, with maybe a 50% market penetration, you could make this self-sustaining. That is, you could generate enough revenue to operate the thing. Another thing that's coming out of the discussions in the Cape Cod Technology Council group is that really what we need is a regional solution as opposed to individual town solutions, because there are a lot of efficiencies that can be had by doing this for a larger area. And anyone who might contemplate doing this, you know, any existing business or any private investor who would contemplate doing this sort of thing would much prefer to do it over a, on a regional basis as opposed to a single municipality. So, part of the conversation for Harwich should be, how do we cooperate with other towns on Cape Cod? Maybe towns on the Lower Cape, maybe other towns on the Cape Cod. On Cape Cod, I think towns from Falmouth, from Bourne and Wareham to Province Town are all, one way or another, trying to figure out how to solve this problem. So, the next slide is, my question is, where is the incumbent? Why do we have to have this conversation? I mean, one reason is, there is no competition, so there needs to be a competitive provider. We'd all benefit from there being a competitive provider. But I wanted to highlight this quote that I actually just found last week. It's a current thing, when I was preparing this material, which is what the CEO, Brian Roberts of Comcast, said at some meeting on the cable TV business recently, I think it was this month, it wasn't this month, it wasn't last month. And this stuff in bold is what I lifted out of the report on the Cord Cutters News website. They're quoting another website, but they say, not only does he, that is, Brian Roberts, think that Comcast can take on cord cutting. We know what cord cutting is, right? Forget about your cable TV, just cut the cord and go with purely broadband to get all your content. They're worried about this. But they think now they can take on and make more money from cord cutters. And this is what he says, "We make more money, and that's part of the revenue shift of the company." If people are cord If people are cord cutting, yes, we lose revenue, but we lose expense, and it's maybe not such a big deal as long as they take broadband on the other side. We can envision a day when broadband is even more valuable to them and to us and to the shareholders. Now, I take it that the "them" here is their customers. And what he's really saying, what I take from this, is a lack of support for ongoing support of their internet access business. It's cord cutters, they're looking for broadband provision somewhere to provide access so they can provide their content. And I think what this says to me is towns like Harwich, who only have Comcast as an internet service provider, have to consider what's going to happen over the next decade as Comcast potentially retreats from their internet access business. They're clearly not interested in investing in upgrading what they have. So what are we going to do about that?
And I'm going to get into some questions now. You, you told me when we talked about this that you could talk for hours.
Yes, I, I proved that point.
And I am going to bring this back.
That's fine.
Initial conversation. Let me just get a few questions and thoughts from board members, and then we'll see where we want to go from there.
Okay.
All right, and then we will be bringing this back. Don?
You would start with me. In full admission here, John, I had been a Comcast customer. I saw exactly what they were doing. You can't get a human being, and I must have invested eight work hours in trying to do that. I was getting 300 service, for at least, and I was getting 40 something out of it. Turns out that they had spent 32 years with my underground drop line, RG59 cable, which is really ancient. There's two things that, that I don't think you're getting, and I would love to see a competitive environment, because towns or governments in general aren't really good at these kinds of things. By the time they come up with a decision, the technology's gone past when they were deciding. First one is, I know that they have been really slow in the game in this, they came to regu, to the Mass Municipal Association about 20 years ago with FiOS. It just seems like it's more convenient for them to hook up an entire apartment building because they can drop the, the glass into the basement and they can, they got everybody captured then. They have no plans, and they continue to have no plans to deploy that on Cape Cod, so there's no competitive environment there. But I did act in my own self-interest, knowing that we're at the slowest point right now. You didn't bring it up at all, but I dropped everything and got a 5G service from one of the major carriers, because that's kind of what the competitive environment's going to look like in short term, as soon as they get to deploy this more fully. I know that it doesn't have the reach, and it doesn't have the speed of this, but I think you're accurate. They couldn't give a damn about anybody here, because they don't have to give a damn. The wires that they have, they don't actually replace until they completely fail and nobody's getting any service. In the service loops, they've, I don't know how they've done it mathematically, about how they share on each service loop what they got, but you're right. As soon as everybody comes onto the Cape and moves into your neighborhood, everything comes to a thudding halt, because the loops are too big, and everybody's sharing it all at the same time. I have a lot of people that I know that, that wonder what they've done wrong come June. What they've done wrong is they live somewhere, which has a service loop that is now more populated than it was in December.
So Don, I would take it from that, that you're interested in extending this conversation.
Much, a lot.
Mary?
Yeah, I, I do as well, John. I'm a retired Verizon, and I feel Comcast is where Verizon was how many years ago. Nobody has a landline anymore, just aardvarks like me. The challenge will be...
I know someone else.
Yeah, yeah, sure you do. A lot of someone else's. The challenge will be paying for it, which is why both Verizon and Comcast walked away from fiber to the house. So I really think this, as you had said, has to go regional. So I don't know, is that Cape Cod Commission? Do you envision that's a whole separate organization?
So I have comments about this, but if you want to...
Go ahead, just keep them brief, knowing that it's coming back, because I think I just heard Mary say she wants it to come back too. Go ahead.
Yeah.
So I didn't come here thinking I was proposing to you or anybody else that the town has to come up with $24 million to build a network. That's not what I'm up to. And if you spend a little time looking at what Falmouth is thinking, they're trying to figure out private-public partnerships, but there's a long conversation addressing that issue that we need to continue to talk about. But there's a way to make it, there's a lot of money out there that people have to invest in things that are promising that they want to invest in. And the question is, how do we get that targeted at solving our problem? I, and that's a very high level and perhaps naively optimistic way of seeing things, but that's the conversation we have to have. And in the next step thing, if we get to those, it's like, what are the first steps we can take before we answer the question of how are we going to pay for this, the big scale thing?
I foresee in your future, the chairman of this, this committee, like you are the Conservation Commission. Well, we can talk. Julie?
So thank you. The information's awesome, and I, I think the minute you start talking about Comcast and electric too, you know, ever source and any kind of regional electrical municipal plant, those things spark me, because there's nothing I would rather do than pay a regional commission for my ever source, my Comcast, you know, because when you consider how much money you're paying them every month, if it took me to pay that bill to a regional group to get this up and running, I love the idea. I think it certainly has to be regional. I think we, we failed to invest in our infrastructure in a timely manner, so I think this conversation is key, because if we can start talking about this, I think we need to talk about it now so that we can start making some sort of action items. But I do think it's regional, and then I wonder to the point of whether this is a commission, whether we also look at partners in town. We have some big businesses. We have Wacquase, we have Witchmere, we have a lot of different groups in town that would certainly be seeking the same thing we're doing, which is improving access and speed. And I'm glad to hear you say that it's all coming through one cable, because everybody in my neighborhood must be on a Zoom at the same time I'm on, because it's constantly kicking out. But one other question I had, that you started off with, was the FCC specs and that they are meeting those. Is that, does, does summer population play into any of that? Do we still really have the FCC specs being met in the summer?
The FCC specifications are so high level, for one thing, that, that I, it's a complicated question, and I think if you go on, if you go on the web browser and go to speedtest.com or whatever, whatever, I'm sure you've done this, even when it's congested and you can't make your Zoom meeting work or whatever, or if you own a business and you're trying to just process a credit card transaction, and it doesn't go through because the network is too busy, but you go and do a speed test, it'll still tell you that you're getting 100 megabits per second. So on that level, they're still satisfying the FCC's criterion. The FCC, however, is, and other state and federal agencies are in the process of making broadband maps, which are supposed to identify exactly where people are actually getting the service and where they're not. But at this point, again, it's a regulatory capture thing, that, you know, the people who own the big businesses are trying to control that process, so they don't have to react to service problems. So there is an opportunity now for municipalities, for customers, to give input to the FCC and to the state about where there are actual service problems. So that's one of the next step things, is how do you do that? How do you deal with the seasonal nature of things and report to them that, you know, in January, it's fine, but in, in July, I can't process a simple credit card transaction, which, you know, the actual number of bits that are sent over the network are so small as to be ridiculous. It shouldn't be a problem, but it is. Just one other comment is that, another way to look at this is that we're paying, we're all, those of us who are Comcast customers are paying, you know, a nice tidy sum every month to Comcast, and most, if not all of that money is going off Cape and disappearing. And what, another way to think about building out a network, building out a network that's going to serve Cape residents, is that it's a source of employment on Cape Cod. And part of the expense of building a fiber network, which is running fibers on the phone poles and underground, is hiring off-Cape contractors to come onto the Cape, paying for them for their two hours or more of commute time every day. It would be much better if we had a workforce on the Cape to do that. That's not an easy proposition either, but it's something to think about as we're thinking about what we're doing here.
Well, thank you. I think that, you know, again, I don't know numbers in terms of what this stuff costs, but I would take that thought even further and say we should be looking at a Cape Cod effort to have our own electrical, because we have no bargaining power, and the idea that this little peninsula, and I believe it's still true, is second to Hawaii in rates is outrageous to me. But, you know, here we are, paying to a monopoly Comcast, we've got ever source bills through the roof, and I know everybody's has increased, but our bargaining power is just so non-existent that I would love to see us looking, you know, regionally to create these things, because we also, you know, just had ARPA monies. I know we've spent monies. I'm just saying that as we look each year at what we could be doing regionally, if we were to be looking at those monies and doing this on a regional basis, I mean, our quality of life would be much better, our businesses would be functioning higher, so I'm all for this, and of course, it's a longer discussion.
Thank you, Julie. Jeff?
Yeah, John, thank you. A lot to unpack, some amazing information there. I think I'd also like to bring this back and have more discussion on this topic. And to echo everybody else's sentiments, I think regional approach is clearly the way to go, and it could be a nice jumpstart for some of the other issues that each town on Cape Cod has to struggle with, and that maybe this could be the way to begin having nice dialogue between all the towns on Cape Cod to save some money and stop the monopolies and get a better service, better quality of life. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Joe, anything?
Sure. I'm going to register my disappointment that you didn't hear tonight, that John and I have met several times over the last year, including with representatives from Open Cape. Specifically, what you see on the slide right there in front of you, under the first bullet point, those two italicized tasks were already assigned by me to our IT director. John and I talked as most recently as last fall, and I told him that while we had an IT director, and she was going to be able to do great things, her first directive was to rebuild our infrastructure internally. Since then, however, Sarah Eden has been participating in federally sponsored webinars, talking about funding sources as it relates to President Biden's infrastructure bill over a year ago. So your staff is already working on this. For me, this is my first opportunity to say to a select board with a new member, we are 350 days away from town meeting, and I say that purposefully. Whatever we intend to do relative to fiber optic broadband or anything of that ilk is going to require some funding to even do the basic stuffs, basic stuff. The decision was made by me as part of capital that we first had to take care of the town of Harwich's municipal needs for IT. I think you would all agree, we have a great plan in place for that, but we're already evaluating this. So I would ask that you certainly bring it back, but you allow staff to do the work that they're doing, so we can bring it back to you in a coherent and cogent manner, because much like the topic you're going to talk about next, these are all on a project plan. We're only days away from our town meeting, and that town meeting is going to create more than 40 different projects or procurements. So administration team is working diligently to build a project plan so we capture all of these things, but to ensure that they don't fall through the cracks. So one of the many conversations was John and I, over the last year, talking about this. So we're well ahead of where you may have thought we were prior to this conversation tonight.
Excellent. And, and thank you for that, Joe. This is meant for the Board of Selectmen to get going on this and to see if they're interested in going forward. Thank you for your effort with your staff, but this, as each board member has said, requires a regional approach. So not starting the conversation because you're already working on it, to me, seems counterproductive. Anyone in the public? All set? So my next step, John, and I'll let you have some closing remarks, would be to have another meeting on this in the near future and have, and to go over the next steps. Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to thank Joe and acknowledge Joe, and I'm sorry, I didn't get to talk to this slide, so I didn't get to give the background that you're, you're giving, Joe. But yes, some of these have been addressed, and I have additionally had several conversations with Sarah, myself, about, well, other things, but also specifically funding opportunity and what's going on, and having a look at the network in town. And I think those things, you know, all these things need to be considered by administration, but by the select board, how all these things are going to work, and some dedicated planning has to go, both the municipal part of it, which is part of, and also for the larger townwide needs.
Great. All right.
And thank you for giving me the time to talk.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we're going to get on to discussion on Chatham Road and Route 39 intersection, which is referred to as Hope and Go. The last time we talked about this, I believe, was our January 3rd Selectmen's meeting. So I put this on so that we can get an update based on that meeting and what we were discussing at that meeting. Joe, do you want to open this?
Certainly, as you see in the minutes that were provided, I did meet with staff after that discussion. As you can see, the history that predates me, there have been different discussions that have gone on regarding property use, eminent domain takings, and things of that nature. I do know, or I do believe that all, you received an email from a local resident who was very familiar to us regarding some tree work, so I've already directed that to Public Works. But similarly, in this case, and I think what you've seen me do with our last town meeting, is many of the projects that we have had from years past are languishing because there's no associated funding mechanism. And so this is a conversation that I have with Public Works, Public Safety, and Water, Wastewater, with the understanding that when we talked about it back in January, it was too late in our process, so this is on our docket for matters to include in, in the planning for the 2024 Annual Town Meeting, unless there's an earlier meeting that could affect on that. However, with that, I would defer to staff and others that want to comment.
Okay. Link, do you want to comment on, on where we're at? And I guess where I'm at with this, Joe, is this started in 2018, before you. It has been a request of our Traffic Safety Committee. It has been complained about an awful lot by people that are trying to make that left-hand turn. One resident wrote us today and was sideswiped by somebody that was looking so far to the right that they didn't look again to the left when they shot out and got sideswiped. We lost an ambulance over this, and, and it's, I guess, a little frustrating to me to continue to talk about it and not make this the priority it should be, because it is a, is a bad accident waiting to happen. And I know that one of the requests was to speak to the homeowner again and see if they're interested in donating or selling a portion of land, and those are the things that I was looking at, not looking at putting this off for another two or three years. Link?
Link Hooper, DPW Director. Seeing this on the agenda, I took the liberty of contacting the homeowner today. I contacted her back in 2018. At that time, they were amenable to working with the town on this. They have like concerns about this intersection being dangerous and, you know, are asking questions I'm unable to answer. I view this process, and this has been kicked around a long time, that would start with, start with a survey, you gather the information, have it, then you have it engineered. About a year ago, maybe a year... About a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, the administrator asked me to put numbers to that. At that time, I said this is about a $250,000 project. I've looked at those numbers again for this evening. I'd recommend that probably the number to be carried would be $300,000. About 50,000 of that is tied up in engineering and survey that I've been hopeful, along with a lot of others, to hopefully get a town engineer and a surveyor, that we might be able to take care of at least that, that portion in-house. Unfortunately, there was nothing in our county bid items for our road construction that we could go ahead and just piecemeal this. So I think this really needs to be a standalone project. There's been a lot of work done by the DPW and others and Public Safety. We removed the large tree that was at the corner. The hedge is kept as low. We've tried to impact the intersection as best we can, you know, without spending a whole, a whole bunch of, of money down there. But I can't even answer the woman's question, the homeowner's question about, well, how much property do you need? How much closer is it getting to my house until we survey and have the engineer, and have the intersection redesigned?
Thank you. Linda?
Linda Sebula, Traffic Safety Committee. Yes, we have been looking at this intersection since before 2018, probably going back to 2016, which is now, I can't do the math in my head, but it's a patload of years ago. One of the things that I'd like to request, Mr. Chair, of somebody in this town, anybody in this town, would be what is the plan? What are the 10 steps? I'm not asking them to take the 10 steps, but what are the 10 steps that would have to be done for this project? I know you need an engineering study. We need to identify funding. Can somebody put those 10 steps on a piece of paper? Now, 2016 to 2023, which I think is, is that seven years? In seven years, nobody in this town has put those 10 steps on a piece of paper? That's all we're asking to start with. And the Traffic Safety Committee has been after this since 2018. So we're looking for those 10 steps, a sheet of paper, and little names next to it or departments as to who's going to carry each one out. Traffic Safety Committee is happy to help with anything. And we did, and I can speak for the Traffic Safety Committee, because we did pass in mid-2021 a request to the town administrator to put this on the capital plan, which it has not appeared yet. So that's what we're looking for, Mr. Chair. And I would really appreciate that post haste.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, I'll start with you on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Linda, and Link there. I think obviously the public safety aspect of this needs immediate attention, and this being my, my first day on the job, I would like to be somehow involved with potentially moving this forward. I think this is something that can be handled rather quickly. Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Linda's right. I mean, it's not just about jiggling around the intersection. We've got, and this takes forever. The speed limits with a state, you've got 45, 40, 35, and 25 within walking distance of each other, and when you're making a left turn, I'm worried about the people that I keep following into town where the white sign blows up and it reads 43 or something because nobody slows down. I mean, there's got to be some component in this that's a speed mitigation possibility, as well as the design of the intersection, because this thing, it's a relic of things gone past. If you drive up in upstate New York or out in western Massachusetts, you see these things all the time where they had these roads that did not connect, connect to each other perpendicular. They were, they all came on an angle, but most of these communities have been working at solving them. I mean, we still have ours, and ironically enough, it's at the other end of a road where we had one for years in the other spot, on Route 28, and somehow that got managed to get fixed. This thing has become like the orphaned child of town, and somewhere or another, we've got to fix it because it's scary when you see trucks going down Chatham Road because now they have GPS and it tells them, yeah, you can get right to the middle of town by taking a left turn. Yeah, I, I've seen an awful lot of near accidents that involve heavy vehicles that can't speed up to make the turn quickly because of the inertia of the vehicle. And it's not going to help to go down Lover's Lane because that's even more insane for a truck to take. So I don't know what the answer is, but I do agree with Linda. The answer was yesterday.
Mary?
I don't know that I have anything I can add to that. Obviously, it's a problem. I, I don't go on the street. It's just not worth my while. I, I guess I'd be interested in hearing Joe say, what, what can we do? Does it have to wait till next year's town meeting?
Joe?
So it depends. You know, you heard your DPW director talk about the need for engineering and surveying. We continue ongoing, it's still out there on MMA, to search for an engineer. So absent that, we have funds available that have been going to general engineering. So if we don't use that funding source, we need another funding source. I'm, and I'm not deaf to what's been said. I'm going to, however, continue to say there is a project plan that accounts for what we've just passed, as well as drawing in projects from years past to try to get all of that backlog done. This would be one of those projects.
Julie?
I don't have anything new to add. It's a huge problem that needs to be addressed, and whatever the best way we can go about it in terms of money, engineering, I mean, even engineering is difficult at this point, so.
Yeah, and I guess that's, my question, Joe, is if we have money available for engineering and surveying, and that is what we're going to need to put a plan together and a cost together, why don't we at least start with that? We don't have our own engineer, but if we have the money to do it, and we have money in those budgets, why wouldn't we do that?
So I don't know that the money is available in the budget because of the number of engineering projects that we already have. So that, for me, is why the fiscal year 24 project plan is so critical, to be aware of all the needs that were just funded at town meeting. Because what I don't want to do is to, can you come back at these meetings and hear from folks about things that didn't get done that should have gotten done? So the department has been working for the last several weeks on their own plans for what they know they have to do, and then after we meet this week, I'll be assigning additional projects to the teams because we need those resources internally, and we need to see what we have available for the resources to support the staff resources, and that's money or vendors, what have you. So I don't know what we have yet, and I won't know that until I look at everything in total.
Okay. Well, I, I applaud you for putting that process together, given where we ended up with it for procurement and playing catch-up for three years. But given that this came up in 2016, again in 2018, again, one or two more times, and then again with us, January 3rd, where we said that it was a very important project again, watching the time, and I'm not pointing fingers, watching the time that it takes to get something done and waiting for that next accident seems completely irresponsible. This project and the new method of doing things, which, again, I applaud, this project should be at the top of the list because it started in 2016, and it was a recommendation of a Traffic Safety Committee and a recommendation of the Police Department, I believe. But again, this board bringing something forward to be told about a process and that we're going to wait another town meeting and then another year to get this project done, quite frankly, is unacceptable to me, unacceptable to me. Julie?
To you, Mr. Chair, I, this might be more of a question for Link, but Route 39, do you need state buy-in on any of this?
You, Mr. Chair, no, we do not. Route 39 is completely a town-owned road.
Oh, great.
Even though they have state, Route 137, same thing. If I may, Mr. Chair, just Mr. Howell, the other end of Chatham Road, that was a wide-open intersection. All we had to do was engineer and put some paint down. That was a really easy fix, and it's worked pretty effectively. Unfortunately, we're very confined in, at this intersection, and it involves private property to really do anything right.
Mary?
While you're there, Link, what about Ginny Hewitt's suggestion about a tree of hers that she thinks just, it's, it's actually not hers, it's on town property? Would taking that down have any reasonable impact?
Let me look at it and get back to you. I meant to get out there today. I saw the email, so I went out, I, I meant to, I just didn't, ran out of time today of bandwidth to look at it. But I will, I will look at that tomorrow.
Don?
Pull up a chair. So if that's not a state road, how difficult is it to survey the speeds? I mean, because that's incoherent to me. How could you possibly have four different speed limits within a space of about 1,000 feet?
Much like we have multiple speed limits on Queen Anne Road, where the town was desirous to set it uniformly, and we just got told no by Mass DOT.
Proximity of those speed limits is way wider than this.
Mr. Howell, all the speed limits should correspond to traffic warrants, which are all approved by the board and approved, approved by Mass DOT. We could certainly take a look at them, but the signs that's supposed to go, they'll tell you one-tenth of a mile from here, one-tenth of a mile from here, and, and so on. So regulatory signs, we have no flexibility as staff to do anything with, except ensure that they're in the proper place.
What, what would it take for us to actually do a traffic survey? I'm not talking about the signs, I'm talking about the actual limits.
Is the question, sounds like a traffic engineering question, to see if they are adequate and you want to change them. The Cape Cod Commission has assisted the town in a number of, of these, Queen Anne Road being the latest one about a year ago or so. They wrote letters on our behalf, and Mass DOT came back and said, no, because they're the governing authority. So we could certainly ask the Cape Cod Commission to look into this, but I see that this is tied with an intersection project, that it's kind of together and kind of should be done together, and you might have a stronger case to make a, make a better case for lower-end speed limit.
I'll give you two bases to throw into the hopper here. Queen Anne Road does not have the center of town right after the lower speed limit, and Queen Anne Road does not have a bicycle crossing, which by itself is really dangerous because it's not perpendicular within proximity to all of this. It's, that intersection is sandwiched between the two things, and they're interrelated. The intersection being messed up and the speed with which you can go, I'm not talking about where you're placing signs, I'm talking about, because newer cars actually throw it in your face on the windshield, it's like, okay, the speed limit here is 45. It's almost like encouraging everybody, well, go ahead, keep going.
Speed limit signs are regulated, the regulatory signs of their placement. So I have no autonomy to change anything. We could certainly look into it. The only reason I was bringing Queen Anne Road up with is because the town wanted to have a lower uniformed speed limit through there, much like we requested on Great Western Road. And what we got back was, no, it's going up and it's going to be uniformed on Great Western Road. So a lot of times, you don't get what you ask for with Mass DOT with the speed limits.
But you won't get it if you don't ask.
So I'll bring the speed limit topic back, and then we'll decide, and then we'll wait for Joe's plan to decide where this project falls for us. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question, Link, and thank you. On one of the renderings here, I do see that there's a land-taking line delineated. Where did, when was that, or how did that come about?
I believe what is in your packet was done by Bob Cafarelli, former town engineer. That was a very preliminary plan. That was not like an engineering-level plan where I could speak articulately about how much property that involved.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Link.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Yes, don't take that as an engineering plan. Those were concepts as thoughts that what could be done in that area. So there's a couple of renditions there of things that could be done, but those are not engineering surveys, so don't take them as 6.2 square feet have to be taken, please. Just a comment on taking the tree down. Please don't minimize this area as taking down a tree, because when you approach that intersection from Chatham Road, your car is not perpendicular to the road, it's like this. Trying to see way over your shoulder to see if anybody's coming that way is, is not going to be fixed by a tree coming down. Will that tree coming down improve a sightline to the left? Yes, but it doesn't solve the problem. So please don't minimize this by a tree.
Gotcha.
Thanks.
Mary?
No, and I, I wasn't assuming that that would solve the problem, just that it was a quick bit of an improvement.
Hello, my name's John. I'm actually from Hyannis. I'm sure this has been asked before, but have you looked at just putting in stop signs or throwaway stop at the intersection? Kind of nice to slow it one down coming to center of town anyways. You know, it's a very fast area, so I think, you know, stop signs, even if they're temporary, might be nice.
Thank you, John. Anything further? Joe, I guess we'll leave it at we'll wait to bring the plan back and see where this falls on, and, but any work that if, if we can get started with surveying and engineering and you find the money, which is what we always used to hear, is find the money. I think it's, talked about it long enough. All right. Roles of committee members giving the select board direction. Joe, you and I had a conversation about this. Do you want to open this?
So if memory serves correct, Mr. Chairman, there were, there has been discussion over, I think, the last year or so with various committees. So I think you were looking to have a conversation with the newly constituted board on that topic. I think that generally dovetails with item E.
Charter revisions, yeah. Really where this came up was, it started with a conversation based on a resident that approached me, looking to put together a project adventure. And I, as the liaison of the committee, the, I sent him to the committee. He took it from the committee and went to the school committee and had several conversations. We brought it last week. Joe, if memory serves me correct, you, you have another idea how that process should work?
Generally speaking, I didn't know that that was the topic for tonight.
That's kind of where I was going with that topic, and, and as far as how that dovetails into charter revisions, I mean, the committees are advisory committees to the Board of Selectmen. Joe and Jeff, that's something that next week we'll get into, the role of the liaison, what you're, what you should do and what you should not do. That's customary for the reorganization of the boards. But this is a really kind of a general topic. I don't, I don't see where this system breaks down. The town administrator expressed that he, he should know before it comes before the Board of Selectmen is kind of what I, what, where I was going with this. Is there anything, Joe, that you think should be changed in that?
I'm not at all prepared to have that people for conversation tonight.
Okay. Don, any comments on this?
No, totally agree with everything you said.
Okay. Jeff?
No, no comments.
Mary?
No. I wasn't here last week.
We'll bring, we'll bring that one back, okay? Discussion on potential charter revisions. In your packet, you have some that were recommended by the Charter Review Committee, so we could start with that conversation. And Joe, do you want to open anything on this?
I believe you said in the packet, you have what was presented to the board regarding items, as, I think, as you know, the bylaw Charter Review Committee would win on any proposed articles that impact upon governance. So I think that was the essence of some of what they've covered, but beyond that, talking about changes to the town's charter known as the Harwich Charter. I have opined, and I'd offer it again, as someone who reads that book constantly and daily, I think it is ripe for a review, but that's not my call.
And more broadly, Joe, and I imagine it's coming in the next couple of weeks with your plan on open procurement, we did, we did get a article passed at town meeting for $75,000, if memory serves me correct, to hire an outside firm to do a review of our charter and make suggestions?
My recollection was that was amended at town meeting and reduced the scope, so I'd have to look back at that.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The reduction prior to that, the scope was reduced from zoning bylaws down to the charter and to the regular bylaws. That was the only scope change.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Joe, I anticipate that's coming back before us?
Yes.
As part of your plan? I mean, that, to me, some of these suggestions that are in this packet are part of a big picture. One that I would like to see us go forward with if we're not ready for next annual town meeting would be to change the spec- meeting would be to change the specified time of town meeting so that we have an option to do a Saturday town meeting if we want to. So that's one that, for me, I think that we should vote on as soon as possible and start to get that article made so that that one can be at very least presented. Some of these others, the restructure of the timeline, deadline for budgets, we've already done that and we've made a practice of doing it earlier, so that seems like a very easy one. Don, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Except for the endpoint, my recollection is that we used to start in late January with the meetings of department heads. Then it got to be early February, then it got to be mid-February, then it got to be early March. That's a critical point because some friction with the Finance Committee could be totally avoided if we were able to get that interview with the department heads done earlier in February, so we're not up against the printing of the warrant problem. Because that was a practical problem that you can't get around, it has to be printed.
And Joe, outside of this, you've already come up with a process that addresses some of that. And we're trying to get some earlier dates for next year, correct?
Correct.
So as part of simplifying some of the charter changes, will you present that to us in the near future as to what you see the timeline being so that we can vote another very simple charter change without the colossal consultant?
I could. What I'm leery of is, I can offer any and all opinions that I have, but they're merely that, opinions. I am a former chair of the Bylaw Charter Review Committee for this town, so are others in this room. You know, when we were pursuing the money, there was ample discussion both by the Bylaw Charter Review Committee and Finance Committee as to what they thought the town should do. And that was along the lines of a charter commission, as I understand it to be. And a charter commission is a group that would look at the entire charter of the town and make recommendations. So for me, what I think would be helpful is having a conversation along those lines first. If there's no appetite for a charter commission, then that makes it simpler and I can do the next steps that you're talking about. I will offer, as a former chair of that committee and as someone that's been in municipal government for some time, one of the concerns I have with our Harwich Charter is there is not a required time to look at it. As it turns out ironically today, we would have received the City and Town Newsletter from the Division of Local Services and the Department of Revenue. I bring that up because even they opine on forms of government and things like that and I can certainly share that newsletter with the board, I found it informative. But it talks about how most charters have a five or 10-year look. Some charters will say if the charter was adopted in a year, that ended in four, then you will always reevaluate it in a year ending in four. I don't know that we, I don't see that we have that mechanism. And so for me, I think there is great value in the town, not the town administrator, not just the select board, but the town contemplating, where are we with our charter and how do we want to handle it?
Through you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of things. These drop dead dates in here are, you can't go past. It doesn't mean you can't pull them forward.
Right.
So that was always the presumption, instead of changing the charter, we don't need to change the charter because you could always bring this back three weeks or four weeks if that's what you wanted to do. Secondarily, I was the chair preceding you and preceding another individual for a lot of years and I got to tell you that we made substantial, we did a substantial review that we have a water, wastewater department because we did that. There were a lot of other changes that occurred at that point. I agree with you, it should be periodically looked at, but it hasn't been abandoned. So there are certain things that we could do without a commission, without any, without a change of the charter, if we just agreed to do them ourselves, that, that's the drop dead date, but I would really like to have it three weeks further, earlier. And I thought we had made that a point last year. We'd like to be able to move the deadline up.
Joe, anything?
And?
Mary, go ahead.
And we did. We did things ahead of those deadlines this year.
But somehow?
You put out a new schedule and backed things up, correct?
Joe?
Yes, within restrictions, meaning anything that in the charter says that the town administrator must, that is the directive to me in this role. That's the last date. It's not the first date and it's not the only date. What I'm talking about are references in the charter that refer to capital outlay, Finance Committee, Select Board, separate from what I do. There is a disconnect insofar as this town has had a practice, and it's that, it's a practice, of incorporating Finance Committee recommendations into the printed warrant. The printed warrant is the sole purview of the Select Board and no one else. The charter does not require for the Finance Committee recommendations to be printed in the warrant. The charter requires that the Finance Committee must release their recommendations no later than 10 days before town meeting. So there is nothing that the Select Board nor the administrator can do to compel that separate and distinct legislative body on how to operate. So that's one of those disconnects where everybody wants a warrant, I think everybody wants a warrant, that is as comprehensive and as informative as possible. And I would like to suggest that I think we accomplished that this last town meeting to a certain degree. But we should look at the deadlines that are in the charter, who owns them? And if there's buy-in between the legislative and the executive, that's great. To the earlier comment, you know, I've been referring to what I've always called, always is only four years, so let me qualify that, but in the four years I've been here, the round robin on the budget. And that's when the Select Board and the Finance Committee meet on a mutual date and you hear from all the department heads. None of that practice is mentioned at all in the charter. But I think it's an extremely invaluable process. So for me, it isn't the dates that relate to town administrator, I absolutely own what you've said. I can, will, and have done them earlier. It's more the role of the Select Board, the role of the FinCom and the expectations at town meeting. And those aren't in sync. I think that's a fair characterization.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is a perfect opportunity for me to listen, learn, and gain a little more information on this specific topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, anything further?
No, but I think we need to talk about it some more.
Julie?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of disjointed pieces between the charter. I remember, I can't remember the exact topic, when John Georgio was here telling us why one piece, right, said this, and then the argument was that the charter said something different, yet, so those things need to be fixed because there's no reason for us to have inaccurate information. Do you remember that? It was a case of either a two-thirds vote, right? And so, you know, John showed us where there was...
On the Capitol plan, I think.
Right. And the other thing I would say is, you know, again, not to get off topic, but it does relate to the warrant, is I'd like to see us get rid of the, either get rid of the unanimous vote when the moderator has to go through the count because a couple of people won't, you know, yield. And then if that can't be done, then, you know, we got to look at electronic voting, which we probably need to look at anyways, but that's another expense, so.
Don?
Just as a postscript, I agree with everything Mary said, but to what you said, Julie, I just want to bring up one fact, and it is a fact. I was a little disconcerted that John Georgio would stand in front of us with a recently changed charter that went through his office for the purpose of creating the language for two-thirds. And then all of a sudden, he was like a different lawyer arguing that it was corrupted somehow and it wasn't consistent in language. That's why we send these things and pay KP Law to review them for consistency. And he comes in and he starts arguing exactly in the opposite direction for something we paid him to help write. And I'm concerned about that, I don't want to see that happening again.
Well...
Julie?
So just to respond to that, I mean, I would want to see all of the background that would relate to the idea that they missed something because ultimately when we heard the scenarios, I don't know that we can say, put it all on them. So again, you may be right, but I would want to see all that information that pointed in that direction.
Be happy to testify, it's part of what I submitted, too.
Well, I think that when he gave his explanation here, I think the board was in agreement with...
Yeah, four to one.
Right.
Don had a differing opinion and saying...
I'm not talking about the opinion, I'm talking about, we have spent on a number of occasions, money with KP Law revealing something that didn't do what we intended it to do, and we paid for the review.
Yeah, so, and I'm just saying, I'm just, just to be clear, I would just want to know that that, all that information was accurate before I made any kind of decision based on that.
Yeah, and I would just say, Don, I completely disagree with you on that one. Not the first time, won't be the last time, but I completely disagree with you on that one. All right, Joe, I guess here's the question, because we can talk about this for the next nine or 10 months and do nothing. We have $75,000, if memory serves me correct, you mentioned charter commission. Is there anything prohibiting us from putting together an independent group as well as hire the consultant with the $75,000 so that we're not piecemealing a document that's already been piecemealed? So in my opinion, all year long, we talk about charter changes and there's numerous ones and Chair of the Charter Review Committee on many occasions has said to me and publicly that the charter was written vague for a reason. I still haven't been able to figure out, and vague to me makes no sense at all. So I think the entire document needs to be, needs to be gone through. And Joe, to your point about FinCom, Board of Selectmen, and changing ours, not yours, how do we get there? And we pay you to administer the town, so I'm asking your opinion and it matters.
Sure. Thank you, I appreciate that. To the last question first and the question I heard earlier in your comments. Sorry, I already forgot it. Did you say, how do we do that? So technically, legally speaking, and I know there's others, many others in the room or elsewhere that can speak to it, under the Constitution of the Commonwealth and the general laws, there are two mechanisms by which municipalities, specifically towns, change their charters. There is the route that we've done recently where an article goes in front of town meeting and if it's adopted at the town meeting, the next town election will have it as a ballot question. That's how you became a select board. So there's that mechanism. The other mechanism is you petition the legislature through the town meeting to adopt a home rule charter. I'm going to leave it to others to talk about the merits and demerits of either of those options. Regardless, it is my opinion that whichever mechanism a town chooses, they often rely upon a broad group known as a charter commission for the purpose of revising or in some cases, not us, creating a charter. If you're going to create a charter commission, it could start at the Board of Selectmen, but it's bigger than the Board of Selectmen. And it's certainly not something, in my opinion, that should be reportable to the Board of Selectmen. This would be an independent body that would use the charter. So to your earlier question, yes, I think the $75,000 is a completely appropriate use for that kind of funding, for that use of funds, to support a charter commission with a professional consultant or some such sort as they review the document. Again, I think it would be worthy if I share with you, the City and Town Newsletter that came out today dated March 18th, they talk about exactly that. And for me, you can't have a more dispassionate organization than the Division of Local Services. That is to say, generally speaking, they don't care what your form of government is, but they're very concerned about forms of government that work. And so I think it's very timely if I share that.
And then what do we have to do to get to that point?
That point being a charter commission?
Yes.
I would defer to counsel, but I can ask the question through you to counsel on what mechanism should the town use to establish a charter commission?
Mary, I'll start with you on that, because I think we've got to stop talking about bits and pieces and look at a big picture and look at the entire document that should be reviewed every 10 years and it hasn't been. And I do think that to Don's point, on the, on the Selectmen side and the employee part of this, when we talk about budgets, you and staff did an amazing job preparing the warrant for town meeting. And it was thorough and it showed at town meeting, all the questions were answerable, everything was done. But that month leading up to is extremely stressful for everybody involved. And our meetings, we're not getting anything else done in those meetings because we're solely focused on that. So for me, now's the time with 350 days or however many days, that we should be making this decision and putting this in place to see if we can get something before the next annual town meeting. And at very least, I'd like to change the date one if we can't get there in a year. But I'm hoping that we can get something done in a year. Don, do you have any problem with that legal question being asked?
No, I just would like to point out that if this is the charter commission, as MGL has it in it, it's an elected thing. It is super other Board of Selectmen.
It's a, they're elected?
It's an elected body.
That's what I think I read, too.
Yeah.
All right, so Joe can ask the legal question anyway and try and get us to the next level. You're okay with that? Jeff?
Yeah, if we have the $75,000, I'd say let's move.
I'm okay with that, but I'm with you. I would also like to put an article, because it's a two-year process if I understand correctly, to put an article in for next year to give us the freedom to move it to Saturday. So while this charter thing that sounds like it could take some time plays out, let's at least try to fix that.
Joe?
If memory serves correctly, there's nothing that prevents a special town meeting from taking certain actions that would change the charter. The salient point is, if you do town meeting and town election, it is a two-year, but it could be '23, '24. So it could be fall of '23 and spring of '24. And again, that's if you go that route rather than petitioning the legislature. A petition of the legislature could also be done at a special town meeting, if my memory is correct.
Julie?
No, I don't have anything further to add, but I will say that, you know, we also have the other situation where we were going to assess the zoning bylaws. We need to do that as well.
And that's what the change was prior to, at the pre-meeting before town meeting, was taking that out. In order to bring that back, Joe, we can have the planner start looking at the bylaws, but can we, that's just another article to look for money to have someone do that study too, right?
Correct.
So that would be an article at annual that we should contemplate.
Right.
So Joe, you're okay with calling the attorney and figuring out what steps?
What the next steps would be, certainly.
And I think worst-case scenario, we can use the $75,000 to hire a consultant to make recommendations back to this board without having an elected commission.
Correct.
Right? So either way, we have a mechanism to look at something besides these memos. Thank you. All right. Discussion on possible votes, send a letter of support for project at Five Bells Neck Road. John, thank you for your patience, state your name and full name, either, any way you want to be.
This is fine. My name's John Carey. I live in Hyannis. And I am asking for a letter of support from you guys. I guess I should start, I don't know if I ever formally thanked you guys for the support in selling the West Hard School. I've been working hard on it the last 12 months. It's a difficult project, but I've enjoyed working with everyone in the town, they've been great. So obviously, costs, interest rates, material, labor, everything has gone up with inflation and stuff. So I finally got the project through, mostly through the town of Harwich, and now I'm looking to put together the financing details. Actually Cindy put me in touch with a state grant that I've been working with, the underutilized property program that administers $8 million a year to projects like mine, like ours in Massachusetts. And they actually do have trouble finding projects in Cape Cod. Last year, I don't think they had any down here. So I've been working with them and the application is due early June. And part of the application is getting support from the municipality that the project's in. And I think we all have a vested interest in seeing this building, you know, saved and repurposed and paying taxes. So I'm not a great writer, but I did submit a sample letter. If you guys have copies, I printed off some if you need them. And you're more than welcome to revise it. I don't know if it's full enough for a board, but I would like your support. So I appreciate you guys helping me.
Thank you, John. Joe, thoughts on this?
You made the reference, we need to put it on our record, the skunk at the garden party. party?
Yes.
As I refer to myself lovingly.
Yeah.
So if I could, through you to the petitioner before the board, you said a project like ours?
Yep.
Who do you mean in that as far as the hour?
When you guys sold the property to me, the request was housing, or, yeah, the request was housing and saving the structure. I see myself as a caretaker for the structure currently, and it's being rebuilt and saved is an asset to the community. So I look at the project as the town of Harwich has interest in this, in this building being saved. And I say that tongue-in-cheek. It is my project, but I think a lot of people, I know a lot of people want the building saved, and at some point, if this project doesn't get funded, the building doesn't get saved, so.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So my concern is always, as your chief procurement officer, I think you all know that the town disposed of this property as surplus through an RFP process. And so tongue-in-cheek aside, I wouldn't want anyone to assume that the town was a partner in what's happening. That is not the relationship that the town had when the property was disposed of. I certainly wouldn't have an objection, nor I think necessarily should I. It's up to you folks. But for me, I'd want to make sure that all parties are clear on expectations. While the town, through the Select Board, can offer this letter of support, we couldn't agree to things where we say that it's a partnership or it's a mutual project. I think the essence of the letter is fine for what it gets to, but just wanted to make sure that everybody's expectations were on the same level.
Thank you for that. And I did ask Joe for that, so you're not the skunk at the lawn party. We want to make sure that you're...
Thank you, so noted.
Not, not, not right now.
Right, not in this instance.
We wanted to make sure that we were covered, or I wanted to make sure that we were covered. Jeff?
Sure, John, thank you for being here, and thank you for all the work you've done at Five Bells Neck. I think this is probably one of the projects that I followed most closely over the last year and have spoken in support of this project. And I think my view has not changed or wavered one bit, other than getting stronger to support this project. And I am of the, of the position that whatever we can do as a board, so long as it fits, as Mr. Powers has said, nice and neatly within the framework of how it should be presented by our board, if we are in support, I would support sending this letter for sure.
Thank you very much.
Don?
What he said.
Mary?
Absolutely support it, and I'd be proud to sign this.
Julie?
I appreciate all of your struggles that you've been through and all the various boards, and I'm glad you've gone through all that, and I certainly support this project and would be happy to sign.
Thank you very much.
Joe, does that letter as written, do we tweak it tomorrow and then bring it back next, next week for a final vote? And does that fit into the timeline? You need it sent now.
Do you have a meeting next week?
We do on Tuesday.
Oh, okay, that would fit in. Yeah, June 3rd, I think, is the submission deadline. And I sent over a Word document, so all the "ours," I'm noticing there's a few, can be removed.
Joe, does it make sense to have yourself and staff tweak it?
Yeah.
To something that conforms with what we're supposed to be doing?
Well, I appreciate what Mr. Carey just said about the pronouns used in the document. It should be clear that the town sold the building and that you support what he's doing, but it is not a mutual project.
John, I support it 100%. Want to sign it? So if you're okay with just waiting until Tuesday, all we're going to do is look at a new letter and sign it, unless the board wants to make the motion to support tonight and allow the chair to sign, and then we don't have to bring it back.
I would like to do that.
Yeah, let's do that. Second.
And looking back, the "ours" are, I wrote it as if I was you guys. I wrote a proposal for you guys, so it's not actually...
So there's a, there's a motion in a second for Joe to redraft the letter and to authorize me to sign. Any further discussion?
Good luck.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mary seconded it?
Yes.
And I'm an aye, that's a five-zero, so, John, you won't have to wait till next Tuesday. We'll try and get that done this week for you, and the office will get it to you.
Thank you. One final thought. Mary, I know you read the position openings every meeting. I live in Hyannis. I own two rental properties in Harwich. Can I be on any of your boards, or is that only for...
I'm going to defer to John, I mean, Don.
Do I need a primary residence here?
It's not, it's not prohibited. I mean, we give preference to local residents, and I personally always did more so for regulatory bodies, because I'd like you to have some skin in the game if you're changing rules in the town, but it doesn't prohibit you at all right now.
I do have skin in the game. I have two properties here with many tenants.
No, I don't mean that. I mean, if you were, if you were involved in a vast zoning change, which somehow had accrued benefit to you, the preference was generally for somebody who lives in town, if only because they're going to have to live with the ramifications forever. It's not just the ownership of some property, but what you're talking about, there's no prohibition.
So, John, the protocol would be to fill out an application in the front office and check what you're interested in? They'll set up an interview. You'll interview, and Don just said it can happen. The interview committee will make a decision and bring it to the rest of the board for a final vote.
Okay.
Mary?
And there's been between 28 and 32 openings since I started doing this, so I got to believe there's room for you somewhere.
Yep. You can boot me whenever you want. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, some might have a different opinion on that, but contracts, motion on, aye?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject, I believe the way that the IMA has established it would be to endorse the contract and authorize the chair to sign.
Okay. Don?
I move that we endorse the, what, for the, you mean for the...
Intermunicipal agreement with Town of Orleans?
Yeah, where is that?
Flip it over, flip it to...
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve an intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Orleans regarding supportive daycare program for residents with dementia and cognitive impairment.
And authorize the chair to sign.
Yeah, authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero. Town administrators' report?
Mickey says aye.
Selectmen's report, Jeff?
Yeah, I don't have anything to say about the Selectmen's report. Thank you.
Don?
I will. Jeff and I had an excellent last Tuesday, that's all I can say. But I also want to take the opportunity, because it hasn't been spoken about, to appreciate the effort that Pete Pocarski put in for it. I mean, this was an issues-oriented discussion, and everybody did a terrific job.
Yeah, I concur. Mary?
I'd just like to acknowledge one of our teachers. Nancy Gifford was just selected as the Massachusetts STEM Teacher of the Year. The announcement was made by CEO Robert Kraft. It comes from the Patriots Hall of Fame. As this year's recipient of the honor, Montemoi Middle School will receive $5,000 from the Patriots Foundation in Gifford's name to be used for STEM education. Gifford will also be appointed to Governor Mara Healy's STEM Advisory Council chaired by Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll. So hats off to Nancy Gifford.
Thank you, Mary. Julie?
Welcome to Jeff.
Thank you.
Good job, Don, and yes, Pete, good luck to Pete, too. I was grateful that he put his hat in the ring as well, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.